Okay, let's do that. Five thirty, you need time to close up?
No.
Huh?
No.
Okay.
Okay, what did I do with my agenda?
I have this for you too.
Oh, there it is. Yes, she is, we were talking. The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board Meetings are now in session. Today is Tuesday, April tenth, the time is six P M. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father Jesus, we come to you tonight and we ask Heavenly Father Jesus for wisdom for all the elected leaders that we have. We know this world is in a turmoil, Heavenly Father, and we know Jesus that only you can straighten it out, but we ask that you give them wisdom. Tonight, we ask for this city council, each one of these elected officials, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you just give them wisdom to make the decisions that they have to. They're making the decisions for each one of us within this city. And Heavenly Father Jesus, they need your guidance. We ask Heavenly Father Jesus that you be with the city employees, each one of them. Be with our first responders, be with our local firemen and policemen, because Heavenly Father Jesus, they're the first ones when an emergency comes around. We just ask that you protect us, be with us. Just grant this city the greatest blessing there is, just put your arms around it. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Please be seated.
Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member Leanne Jones Cruz. Here. Council Authority Member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Council Authority Member District Two Cindy Fossey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here.
There'll be no changes to the agenda. Any council or authority member or staff have direct conflict of interest on any scheduled items, please state your conflict now. Seeing none, we'll go on to presentations. First one is item one point one, Proclamation, National Library Week, April eighth through the fourteenth. And Maria.
And your speech is ready, right?
Um.
They just have to say, oh, I stand right over there. Okay, then you do have to make a couple remarks. The City of Riverbank, Proclamation, National Library Week. Whereas literacy is a key to achieving personal success in school, in business, and in life, and whereas libraries lead a working with diverse communities, including people of color, immigrants, and people with disabilities, offering services and educational resources that transforms community, opens mind, and promotes inclusion and diversity. And whereas libraries and librarians open up a world of possibility through technology, innovative programming, and through the power of information. And whereas libraries offer twenty-four seven access to library services through online resources, such as ebooks, e-magazines, downloadable audiobooks, music, movies, online language instruction, and research databases. And whereas libraries partners with parents and caregivers to empower children to enter kindergarten with the knowledge and skills necessary for success in school and beyond. And whereas library librarians, library workers, volunteers, and supporters of the Stanislaus County are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the City Council of the City of Riverbank does hereby unanimously proclaim April eighth through the fourteenth, twenty eighteen, as Stanislaus County Library Week, and urges everyone to visit their local library to take advantage of the wonderful resources available, provided through the voters' approved one-eighth cent sales tax dedicated to support of the libraries. Signed this date, April tenth. Here you go. Do we have an official photographer tonight? Okay, we'll pretend. Okay, would you like to say a couple words?
Um, sure. Thank you very much, and it is a pleasure to be a part of the Riverbank community. To us, it's an adventure every day. It's, we learn something new every day, every single day. And just wanted to remind you that this month, April twenty-eighth, we have the Dia Celebration, which is a multicultural event. You're invited to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have something that our official iPhone must.
Yeah, there you go. I'll share with Norma.
There we go. That looks better than me.
Nice. Okay, one, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item one point two. Presentation Legislative Update by Churchwell White.
Mayor and council members, tonight we have Josiah Young with the firm of Churchwell White, who's the city attorney, to provide this update for you.
Thank you. I thank you, Mayor, thank you council members, members of the public and staff for the opportunity to be here. Today, I am going to be just talking briefly about some of the legislative actions that took place last year, twenty seventeen. These are laws that have now come into effect and are, have been implemented in California, so these are things that you may have heard about already. You may have been engaged with the League of California Cities. But the purpose, the real purpose for us being here today, not only as the city attorney, our law firm, Mr. Hallinan is one of the senior partners, but we're also here to just explain to you that we are legislative resource, we are an additional service that is always available to you. So should there be an issue, should there be a bill, please don't hesitate to call us about that, we'd be happy to engage on that for you. We've engaged for other cities, and we're also available to provide information, memorandums, updates on the laws. So today is the April tenth, we're doing a California Legislative Review. I want to first kind of introduce our government relations team. So I'm Josiah Young, I'm the legislative advocate and associate. Also wanted to have a representation of the senior partner in the lobbying shop, this is Randy Pollock. He's been around the Capitol for twenty-plus years, he has a very solid reputation, so it'd be Randy and I going to bat for you up at the Capitol, should you desire that. Getting right into the update. We first want to say that there's a twenty seventeen Legislative Update available online on the Churchwell White website. So if you go to churchwellwhite.com, you search around for the Legislative Update, what we've done is kind of taken a comprehensive look at all the laws that were passed during the twenty seventeen session, and there's a little short breakdown and an outline of the law. It's important to say that we have an Important to Know section where we kind of highlight some of the very important laws, and then a Worth Noting section, and each of those are broken down by some of the different municipal services. So there'd be, you know, areas addressing public safety, areas addressing transportation, areas addressing various city functions, where you can kind of go right and get a digest guide of what laws were passed. Getting right into the highlights, twenty seventeen, one of the major priorities for last year was S B one. S B one was a big transportation bill, kind of dominated a lot of the conversation around the legislature, caused a lot of political kind of ups and downs, and really what it did was it addressed deferred road maintenance. So we know that California has needed some help on its state and local roads. This creates the funding mechanism to support improving the roads. It does it, and I'm sure everyone will remember this, oh, I can't put my pointer up there, but there's a twelve cents per gallon motor vehicle gas tax increase. So there's an additional twelve cents that you're now being taxed at the pump in order to create a vehicle fund to improve the roads. Not a vehicle fund, a fund to improve the roads. There's also an increase in vehicle registration fees based on your vehicle value. A C A five, which is the next measure listed on there, it's a companion measure to S B one, and what that essentially does is it requires the monies that are collected for road improvements to only be used for road improvements. So we know with the governor's budget and the way that the legislature works, sometimes buckets of money are pulled here and there, and that's part of budgeting. A C A five is proposed to be on the, it's actually qualified to be on the June primary ballot this year. If that passes by voter referendum, then the money collected for S B one only stays for the roads. Another major issue tackled last year was affordable housing. It's really a reaction to some of the homelessness that we're seeing across the state, that's affecting big and small cities alike. Two of the first steps that they did were again to try to create some legislative intent and also some funding mechanisms to address affordable housing at the root of the homelessness crisis. What S B two does is it kind of establishes the need for permanent ongoing funding for affordable housing, and it also imposes a seventy-five dollar recording fee on real estate transactions. S B three is the Veterans and Affordable Housing Bond Act of twenty eighteen. This will be on the November ballot, and this will authorize the issuance of a four billion dollar bond. So there are some funds that have been kind of set aside in S B two, and there is also a ballot initiative for voter approval that will add money for existing housing programs, infrastructure, and matching grants. The next one is certainly relevant and hot button, this is the sanctuary state issue. These laws were passed in the twenty seventeen Legislative Session, S B fifty-four by then and currently past president of the Senate, Kevin De Leon. What this bill essentially does is it repeals requirements for law enforcement data sharing, and it limits officers' ability to inquire about immigration status when interacting with potentially undocumented immigrants. It's set to protect those people from police interference or interaction in typical police detainment situations. S B twenty-nine is a companion bill, and I listed two bills, but there was actually a large suite of bills that kind of composed this, comprised the entire sanctuary state law. What the S B twenty-nine by Senator Laura did was it prohibits local law enforcement from contracting with federal law enforcement agencies to engage in kind of data and custody of those suspected of illegal immigration. One of the highlights from last year was S B ninety-four, which essentially merged the medicinal and recreational cannabis laws. I know that that's something that this city has worked on. I think the key important highlight from the passage of the cannabis laws legislatively last year are that the locals have retained control, so the locals are doing what they want, just like here in Riverbank. The next issue that was pretty major last year was park bond. That was S B five by again Kevin De Leon. What that does is it puts a four billion dollar bond on the June twenty eighteen ballot, so this June, this will be another measure for voter referendum. And what this does is essentially allocate millions to finance drought, water, park, climate, and coastal protection, and outdoor access related programming. It's important to see that there's a two hundred thousand dollar per city funding for parks, and then there's a seven hundred and twenty-five million dollar allocation for park poor communities. I don't think that that in terms of implementation of that law has been determined what exactly constitutes a park poor community, but you can be certain that there will be some revenue streams floating to the local level to assist with park development. This is by special request, two bills that dealt with sewers. And so what we're seeing here is S B two thirty-nine. What that does is it actually clarifies that stormwater fees are to be considered in the definition of sewer fees. This is important because collection of sewer fees by way of Prop two eighteen are exempt from voter approval process. So, you know, there will be a public meeting that can happen, but this does not have to go to the voter for approval if you want to raise fees by collecting stormwater. S B two two nine, Wykowski, that deals with accessory dwelling units, I think they're called granny flats from time to time, kind of like accessory houses on the property. Related to sewers, an A D U shall not be considered by a local agency to be a new residential use for purposes of counting, calculating collections of fees, including sewer service. So if you put a granny flat on the property, that is not to be considered a new residence for the purpose of collecting sewer fees. Okay, here's a quick lightning round of some bills, some important, some less important. A B one sixty-eight, Eggman, deals with salary information. An employer can no longer ask how much someone made at their prior place of employment in considering what to offer them at the new job. A B eleven twenty-seven by Cal Derone, requires state and local agencies and public venues like movie theaters and restaurants to provide a diaper changing station in the male and female bathroom. A B four two four deals with guns in schools. This is actually another hotbed issue, just dealing with the Parkland shooting and some of the national attention around school shootings and safety. What this bill does is it repeals a law from the prior year where superintendents had authority to allow teachers to have concealed carry weapons in their schools. Now superintendents have been stripped of that authority, and no teachers may carry weapons in schools. A B eight thirty, high school exit examination has been repealed, so it's doing away with a requirement that's been in place since two thousand and six. Students no longer have to pass an exit exam to get out of high school. And the last one from the lightning round, A B three ninety, pedestrian crossing signals. This means that a pedestrian can cross an intersection when the hand is up, as long as there's a countdown timer giving them the time to run into the street. Now, I put some of those fun ones in just to show there are a plethora and bevy of laws that are passed yearly, and some of them, you know, may be relevant to you all, so again, I encourage and take this opportunity to say if there's anything that pops up of interest, please don't hesitate to reach out to us, this is a free service that we provide in addition to being city attorneys. And I also actually want to pose a question, if appropriate, for the mayor, are you all participating in the next week's League of California Cities Lobby Day?
Some of us are, I believe, the vice mayor and council member Campbell.
All right, terrific, well, I, if I'm invited, would like to join you all and kind of do some of the rounds with you, because again, we want to just make sure that our services, not only as an attorney's or law firm, but also as legislative advocates and lobbyists, are things that you're able to take advantage of. Okay, we're moving on to the twenty eighteen Legislative Outlook.
From twenty seventeen, S B fifty was passed and went into effect on January first. And that's going to affect us, what is our strategy to do the transfer of the Riverbank Army ammunition plant?
So, Mayor, I'm not familiar with S B fifty.
S B fifty denies the ability to transfer federal property to the local control without going through the California, what is it, Land Use Council?
So this is an issue that I haven't, you know, I guess dived deeply into, because I didn't have a client asking to, but it seems like we are now. So I think that this is appropriate opportunity for me to give you a response, maybe provide you a memo about implementation of that after some research.
Churchwell White on that?
You're asking now, I'm happy to do, so that will return back.
Twenty-four hours, I expect a response.
There you go. Note that too.
No, it's one that, I think it was a knee jerk reaction where, I guess, the federal government was going to take away some monuments and pass it over to developers. So California says you can't now transfer any federal government property to local control.
Okay. So we'll look at implementation of that and how it affects the city directly. That's perfect, so all of my kind of hope that we would have something to do is answered. Here we go.
Well, that wasn't all, but.
If you have more, bring it on, we can, we can address it. Twenty eighteen Outlook, it's a statewide election year, there's an undecided governor's race that's pretty intense right now. I mean, there are, obviously there's a frontrunner, but, you know, different polls show different results, and it'll certainly be a marked change from the Jerry Brown era. There are four special elections that are going this year to replace four seats that were lost, either by, or all of them where legislators stepped down or were removed. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. One of those elections has been decided, it was the former, it was the Southern California seat, formerly Sebastian Ridley Thomas. It's been replaced by another Capitol staffer who works in the office of the senator. But there are three other elections where they'll have to go to the November election cycle to determine who the replacement will be. So there's four districts running with no, or three districts, I guess, running with no cover. Also, one more thing I wanted to mention that's not on this list is, of course, the ballot initiative. So there'll be ballot initiatives in June, primary, and then in November. And there are a lot of measures still qualifying, one measure that we're watching closely is a measure that proposes to require two-thirds vote of the electorate on any taxes and fees. So not just special versus majority vote taxes, but all taxes and fees. That initiative has not yet qualified, but they have turned in twenty-five percent of their signatures. So we're watching to see if that initiative qualifies, because that can affect the way things are done for certain.
Would that need a two-thirds majority?
That itself? No, I think that needs a fifty-one percent vote of the electorate.
Fifty plus one, but that doesn't make sense, if you're.
If you're asking for everything to be fees.
That require a two-thirds.
Well, yeah, that's the way it's going, but as I said, it hasn't yet qualified, but we're watching out for that one, particularly how that can affect the local municipalities. The twenty eighteen budget, that's subject to the May revise, but, you know, recession and federal cuts are predicted. The governor, Governor Brown has decided to put five billion additional dollars into the Randy Day Fund, meaning there's about a thirteen point five billion dollar reserve for the government. There's been an allocation of money for unexpected urg, excuse me, emergencies, just given some of the natural disasters that have affected the state over the last year, including floods, and then one hundred and thirty-four million to replace the voting systems for all of the state's counties. Twenty eighteen Outlook, sexual harassment is still continues to be a kind of an issue up at the Capitol. of an issue up at the Capitol. Three of those legislators at least who have to be now covered by special elections, they were removed or asked to step down because of sexual impropriety. That's something that the legislature is still focusing on. They're releasing more information. They're trying to establish policies to protect victims of that type of activity. There's been a change in the leadership of the senate. So the senate pro tem is now Toni Atkins. She was a former Speaker of the Assembly. She's a legislator from San Diego, and she is now running, she was a former Women's Caucus President, I believe, and she is now running the senate. Short and long-term solutions to the affordable housing crisis, so they're still finding ways to address affordable housing and homelessness issue, and responses to the federal government. So dealing with the sanctuary cities and actually sanctuary state. So now we see the federal government has sued California. Several municipalities have either decided to join the federal government's lawsuit or oppose the federal government's lawsuit. Dealing with cannabis is still something that you have to watch, you know, for reactions from the feds. And the federal tax cuts this year, California legislature has decided to try to figure out a plan to reverse some of that. So we'll constantly see a battle between Washington and California probably the rest of this year. With that being said, that is all I have. I need to head back now and get working on this twenty-four hour report for the mayor.
On the federal tax cuts, what they're doing, they didn't take away taxes from this great state. What they did, though, was say that if a state's going to tax the residents, it doesn't come off the federal taxes, which is, I think, is proper. If the state wants to tax, the state tax. If the federal government wants to tax, they tax. You know, you don't get a credit for what federal taxes you pay, but you want what you pay for state taxes to apply to the federal. I think that was somewhat balanced on how they did that. I know not, I'm not in the majority here in California, but I believe that that was the right thing to do. You tax what you need. Now, where do the tunnels stand? Where, California fix it.
Interesting development today, LA Metro voted to support both tunnels, so that's bad news.
They're forty-nine percent of the vote of California.
Just happened today.
So we're going to lose forty percent of our water?
Probably. Yeah.
Where's our dams? All right. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
Anybody have questions for him?
Mayor, I just want to add, Josiah's a great resource. A lot's changed since I worked in the legislature nineteen eighty-eight. So he's a great resource, and as he said, this is a free service to our local government clients, and we have run bills even for cities in the past, so that's available to you all as well.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and for the council members who will be up in Sacramento next week, I'll be seeing you.
I'll see you up there.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Public comment, no action can be taken. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council LRA board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purpose, states your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the city council LRA board.
I'm Adam City Clerk, Mr. City Attorney, Adam Assistant City Manager, members of the council, Mr. Mayor. I'm here representing State Assembly Member Heath Flora tonight. We are enacting in our sophomore year a new policy where we are going to all city councils and board supervisors in the twelfth Assembly District at least once a month to do what your city attorney's office just did at a much smaller scale. But it was very good, concise, but an accurate presentation, so I want to commend your city attorney's office, who's obviously on top of the pulse in Sacramento. I'm going to just update, make a few updates on where we're at as an office on behalf of the assembly member. We have moved our office from Adesto to Ripon. I have passed out cards to the city clerk, but we are now located, for public record, at five seven eight North Wilma Avenue, Unit B in Ripon, California. There were some security concerns last year, and the state has asked us to change the location. We're very sensitive about not moving away, because we felt the Toley Road Office was smack dab in the middle of the district in Ripon, and the far north Toley Road is about the same deal. So it's only about a five more minute drive difference in either direction. So we are moved into that new office with a new telephone number. The telephone number's on the card, but for the public record, it's five nine nine two one one two is the new district office telephone number. In his second year, State Assemblyman Heath Flora was promoted by his colleagues to the whip of the Republican Caucus of the State Assembly. He's now the fourth ranking Republican in the State Assembly, and he's learning his new leadership role in whipping votes, which has been a very busy week and day as bills are starting to move through committee, as you heard earlier from the city attorney's report. The State Assembly Members introduced sixteen bills this legislative cycle. I will not bore you with all sixteen tonight, but I will highlight three bills that we are pressing hard for. As the gentleman before me mentioned, last year's bill by Assemblyman McCarty, AB four twenty-four, which restricted concealed carry situations around the state. We introduced AB twenty-three eighteen, which would go back and allow concealed carry exemption for church and church services. So people who are attending religious services would have the right to carry their concealed weapon. That bill failed in committee today despite bipartisan support by both Republicans and Democrats by one vote. We are, the majority party has allowed us to reconsider the bill. So we're currently determining in Sacramento whether or not we'll make amendments and reintroduce the bill in the committee for public safety. The, probably the chief bill that we're working on hard for now is AB twenty-seven twenty-seven, and that's a, it started off as a, as we wrote it, a volunteer firefighter tax credit in the twelfth district. There is a large portion of volunteer firefighters who do not make a salary. The assembly member wanted to give them a credit on their state taxes. As we began to work with the majority party across the aisle, members of the majority party came to us with even a better deal and asked if we would change the bill, and we were happy to do so. So now all firefighters, regardless of their pay status, as it's written, would receive a tax credit. This bill was referred cleanly, as we say, so that means the bill's healthy. That means the majority party, other than the extra stuff they gave our bill, did not touch it and referred it to the Committee for Revenue and Taxation. And we are cautiously optimistic that that bill will pass and see a vote on the floor. And that would be a great thing for our firefighters across the state of California, and of course, here in the district as well. Everybody always asks at these meetings, okay, thanks for taking care of the firefighters. How about the police officers? Was originally our intent to take care of our law enforcement officers as well. The political environment being what it is right now in Sacramento, the majority party let us know that if we need to do it one at a time, if we did both, that bill would be dead on arrival. So we are focusing on firefighters, and we intend to reciprocate and replicate this bill for peace officers in the next legislative cycle. And finally, we're working on AB twenty-nine oh seven, which is a big deal going on for our small businesses right now. It's a POGA pay stub violation bill. As you guys may know, a few years earlier, when Assembly Member Olson was in this seat, there was a lot of ADA lawsuit abuse going on, where folks were going around to small businesses and suing small businesses, big business, any businesses really, for any ADA violations. Even when small businesses were able to successfully defend themselves in a court, they were still having to pay ten to twenty thousand dollars to defend themselves in civil court. As any small business member could tell you, that's devastating to them. We're seeing the same thing happen now in the district and across the state for any pay stub violation. So if a comm is in the wrong place, or a line item got missed, a small business owner who does their own payroll makes a mistake on their pay stub, lawyers are turning around and suing those business owners, big and small. While large businesses can handle those legal costs, again, it's crippling to small businesses, and we're working really hard to pass AB twenty-nine oh seven, which would give a grace period to businesses of any size to, if a pay stub violation or mistake is found, it would give a reasonable grace period for the business to turn around and fix the mistake before they would be liable in civil court. Like I said, there's thirteen other bills currently going on. Just two other items that we are working on is veterans, especially here in this district, have come to us, the first district, Supervisal District, which includes the city of Riverbank, have come to us concerned that veterans' convalescence care and funding sunsetted last year with the state of California. So veterans who have no family and no means to convalesce at the end of their days have lost the funding from the state to convalesce, something that we're taking very seriously, and we're working with the members across the aisle to see that funding restored. We're also working with the governor's office on that, and we hope to achieve something this legislative cycle, if not by next legislative cycle, to make sure that those who have obviously taken care of our country are being taken care of in their final days. And last but not least, I had the pleasure today alongside the vice mayor to be at the Riverbank Track High School, Riverbank High School Track dedication. It was a great event, and it's great to see great things continuing here in the city of Riverbank and how excited all the kids are and how, I remember when that gym wasn't there and that track wasn't there. I remember playing football on that field as a member of Houston High School and playing against Riverbank and how far that field has come, and it's just an amazing thing to see that the community continues to reinvest in success for itself. So with that, I appreciate the time, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have for me.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
I noticed that the Attorney General responded to my request through your office. You wouldn't happen to have an advance notice for me?
It's not final yet.
Well, it says here that it was.
I'm going to go with your city attorney's response on that.
It's not final yet, okay.
I do want to mention, too, just I wrote down in my Cliff Notes here regarding SB fifty-four, for your note, the city of Ripon, as we speak, is voting to become the first, we expect that to pass in the city of Ripon. The Ripon City Council is going to pass a resolution to become the first city in Northern California to oppose sanctuary state SB fifty-four. So what we are seeing in Southern California is making its way north, and we have no doubt that it will make its way to the district, but that's just an informational item for you guys, that Ripon will be joining Orange County and their municipalities opposing that bill from last year. So with that, I appreciate your time, and we'll yield the floor, as we say in Sacramento.
Any additional public comment?
Good evening. My name is Danielle, and I'm from, or Danielle Gravel, and I'm from Riverbank. And we just wanted to thank everyone on behalf of the Riverbank Cannabis Collective who came out to our educational outreach, and thank the Parks and Rec Office for all of their help, and the ladies who set up, and Juanita, she was super helpful. And we just wanted to continually make ourselves available for the public and the community and allow them to come ask us questions and learn more about cannabis. For us, we believe all use is medicinal, even if you choose to use it as an adult user, you might not realize you're using it medicinally. So if you'd like to learn more, you can always come contact us through our website, riverbankdispensary.com or riverbankcannabiscollective.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional?
Evening, gentlemen and ladies. My name is Mike Wobles, Madera County resident. I'm here to represent public safety issue for the city of Riverbank. I'm in the electrical energy broker business with Generac Generators, and I've come to the board tonight, or the council tonight, to find out if we could get a zoning change on their noise ordinances. We have been graciously working with Donna and Janet with the Planning Department since August to get a permit for a citizen that purchased a generator here in the city of Riverbank for his own personal safety, and we're not able to get that permit based on the zoning noise ordinances we have. I cover an area from Los Angeles to Sacramento, and Riverbank has the most restrictive noise ordinances out of any jurisdiction that we deal with. And I'd just like to bring it up to see if there's a way that we can possibly put the wheels in motion to change that. The city has emergency backup generators on all of their city wells, and I'm sure they have it probably on their infrastructure also. So I'd just like to bring it before the board to see if they could give some direction to Donna to try to move that forward so that we could get this permit. And this generator installed is a public safety issue for people that want to be prepared for power outages. Any questions I can answer for you?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Any further public comment?
Hey, guys. Daniel Friedman, I live right across the street. Oh, sorry about my attire. I coached T-ball, and I just tried to get here as quickly as possible. I've talked with a bunch of the local businesses downtown, and it seems the unanimous vote is that we have a speeding problem between probably third and just in between here and the basic thing over here. I talked with the old, this years ago, but Jill, the old city manager, and she was telling me what kind of cost it incurs to put in like flashing, you know, walk, crosswalks or a stop sign or something like that, and that basically, and I'm not quoting her, I love Jill to death, don't get me wrong, but somebody would have to die, you know, in order for, to put something like that downtown. Which, I mean, if it was your grandchild, that's too far. So, and I know, I know, I've talked with Ms. Cruz about it, and she's talked with Sean about it, and I think they've talked with Chief Kylie about it, and I have noticed a lot more just patrol cars coming through and whatnot. But I just wanted to put it out there that we could get this on the agenda and see if there's something, there's not even, we don't even have speed limit signs downtown. There's, you know, I mean, if, you probably know, and I'm sure Chief Kylie knows, but like what's, what's, you know, they're just buzzing through here crazy. My biggest concern probably, like I said earlier that I coached T-ball, is that when Pizza Plus does move across the street into Landon's old place, that somebody's going to get hurt or killed, and it's probably going to be a little kid running out after a T-ball game or something like that. The fortunate thing of where he's at right now is even though they kind of slow and roll around the corner down by Lance's place, it's, you know, they're still a half a block away. When they come from, I have cameras all over my building, and I've seen, I don't record like how fast they're going, but by the, from the stop sign on the corner, by the time they hit the crosswalk between my place and Aloha's Barber Shop, it's not uncommon that for them to be doing forty-five, fifty miles an hour, easy. Rain, shine, kids, weekend, whatever. So anyway, I just wanted to put that out there and see if that, you know, I'm going to try to make it next Tuesday and next Tuesday and just see where we can go with this and get something done about slowing people down in downtown.
Thank you. I know I'm not supposed to make a comment, but we don't want anyone to get hurt or killed.
Right, right.
So, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any other further comments?
Yeah, House of Commerce, Riverbank. I'm here on behalf of all my proponents and people who are involved in signatures against the cannabis shops that came into Riverbank, and a lot of them couldn't come here tonight, so I'm here speaking for all of us. We didn't get any help on making our petition up. Everyone that asked Annabelle what to do and how to do it was refused, or email, never sent her email back to no one that asked her questions weeks and weeks of time. So according to National Electric, National Electric Code, according to the Voting Register, she's supposed to help us. I was told this by two different people there. I didn't ask her exactly how we should do anything, making this up, because I knew her response, what her response would be to me, because we're not CNN, I own a lot of items, okay? But Art Hidalero, Atisha Hidalero, Jaime Vela, they all requested her help. They didn't get it. When we turned in the petitions, I was one of the two people that turned in both petitions against us. The first petition we turned in was Jennifer McKee, I think, Kay Penso, I think, and myself turned that in. That didn't take us long. We just had to sit in the hall for half an hour and wait for, wait for her to say that she did her part on checking the petitions out, to make sure we're doing it legal or illegal. But the second one that Mrs. Halbert and I turned in is quite different. But the second one that, uh, Mrs. Halbert and I turned in, uh, is quite different. Um, the second we turned in, we were asked if we wanted the, uh, ordinance to go with it. And, uh, I said, yeah, the ordinance has to go with it, don't it, right? She goes, I don't know, you're supposed to know everything, you're supposed to know what you're doing, exactly what she said. So I know anything that went with it because in twenty, twenty eighteen double oh one that we turned in, I turned in with Jennifer, it went with it. I was there the night that Mrs. Hidalero packed this, packed this envelope with all the signatures in it and the ordinance. I knew it went with it, but I'm not going to second guess, well, I did second guess, but I'm not gonna take any chances. So I said, excuse me, I made a phone call to be told by somebody a lot better than I am with this. The other goes with it, put it with it, so, okay, it goes with it. We got response back, the email from her said, um, that we, uh, there was a staple package, it's the signatures, but had nothing to do with the signatures. It was an ordinance against the signatures. I've got it right here, tattooed. This is the first woman did, this receiving the first one is the second one. See the additional things in the second one? Um, I, uh, I also was told by Annabelle that there was a hundred and two sheets of paper, true? Two hundred and four sections. That would be counting the front page, back page, each as an individual section, no. Uh, uh, but at the same time, she told us one sheet of paper with a section. So I clarified this with the, uh, I clarified this with the Voters Register. One sheet of papers, copies on both sides, is one section and it's one piece of paper. Even though Anna Bell said it's two sheets of paper, it's one sheet of paper and one section. So if you get two hundred and four, for the record, I verified the total number of pages received was two hundred and four. Two hundred and four sections, pages, which consists of a hundred and two double sheets, pieces of paper with the last, with the last page indicating signature block eleven thirty-five. That's the number of, uh, signatures we turned in on double oh three. Double oh one, she didn't put down the number of signatures we turned in. We didn't care, we just wanted a receipt for that. But if she's allowed to make these kind of mistakes, how come we're not allowed to make a couple of mistakes? Like, uh, if, if, uh, one page with signature on both sides is one section and in her email she said that each, each section, there had to be something about the, uh, ordinance filed on each page whether it is. The front of this, front of our page had the orders on it, what it was for, what it was against and why. Next page had same thing, but it wasn't on the back. Well, if this is one section, why would it have to be on the back? If this was two sections, I could see it, but it's one section. I clarified that with a lot of legal, with the right legal office involved in this. Anyway, I just wanted you all to know where we were on this and that, uh, as usual, we're very upset. We've got no help from the city attorneys at Riverbank that we pay for. We've got no help from them, we've got no help from this office. Uh, if it, so in case any of you did not know this, now you do. We didn't get no help, but I just witnessed again, like again and again, time and again, people here thanking you for all your help. Thank you and goodbye.
Goodbye. Any further public comment? Seeing number moving forward to the consent calendar, consistent of item three A waiver reading, item three B, approval of the March twenty, twenty eighteen Special Joint City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board Minutes. Item three B one, approval of the March twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board Minutes. Item three C, reject bids for the Riverbank Industrial Complex renovation. Item three D, a resolution to reaffirm the authorization for the officers appointed as the city manager, director of finance, and the new position of Assistant City Manager, Director of Finance, to act on the city's behalf on the management and finance assess. Do I have anyone wishing to discuss any of the consent items? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent calendar.
I second.
We have a motion to approve and a second on the consent calendar.
Council authority members, Fossey.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item five one, continuance of the first reading by title only, an introduction of the proposed ordinance amending Title fifteen, Land Use Chapter one fifty-three, Zoning Section one fifty-three point zero three three, Building Requirements, Single Family Residential District R one Zone.
Mayor and City Council Members, tonight we'd like to request a continuance of this item. When this item was presented to the Planning Commission during their April meeting, they made some suggestions to, um, to revise the proposed ordinance. Um, after looking, after having some legal review, um, those proposed changes need to go back to the Planning Commission, um, to be reaffirmed and then presented to the City Council. So we'd like to continue this item to the May twenty-second City Council meeting, um, so that the Planning Commission has the opportunity to review beforehand.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. I open the public hearing. Seeing no public comment, I close the public hearing. Is, uh, the wish to continue this item until the twenty-second of May? Uh, do I have, uh, any, uh, recommendations?
I make a motion that we continue this item to the twenty-fifth of?
Twenty-second of May.
Twenty-second of May.
I'll second it.
I wasn't gonna get it. We have a motion to, uh, continue, item five one and a second.
Council members, Fos.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
New business, item six one, consideration to authorize an issuance of a compliance order for the conduct of a prohibited home business.
Mayor and Council, Donna Kenny, our Planning and Building Manager, we'll, we'll give the presentation for this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. As mentioned, this concerns a compliance order. So a code enforcement case, um, has been opened due to citizen complaints of evidence of a prohibited home business, which is building skate ramps and selling them um, through an unpermitted home occupation. Uh, the section that applies is, um, one fifty-three point two sixty-seven Home Occupations. That section is prohibited uses and item B, manufacturing, including cabinet shops and similar uses. Um, that would involve, uh, the similar uses would involve hammering and sawing and, uh, the noises associated with that. So what is, what is some of the evidence that we have concerning this home business? Um, up until recently, um, in fact, over the past three to four months, uh, the citizen has been advertising on Craigslist in Sacramento, San Francisco, and the Modesto areas. Um, as you can see, uh, it's skateboard and scooter ramps and the condition is, uh, new. Uh, the rest of the ad talks about, um, different types of skate ramps and what their costs are. And then, um, at the bottom you can see there is a whole lot of, uh, indexing words. So anybody typing those words in would be able to pull up the ad on Craigslist. In addition, we have photos both, um, from, uh, the neighborhood complaint as well as from Craigslist. Uh, this scene shows a truck, uh, unloading lumber in the, uh, citizen's driveway. Here's a follow-up shot of the pallet of wood. Now these next few photos are from Craigslist and they're photos of the skate ramps that are for sale. In this final photo here, I have, a, a truck has shown up, uh, uh, we assume having purchased that skate ramp and is, um, attempting to take it away. Unfortunately, it was a little large and, um, I'm told they had to take it apart to get it in the truck. As far as citizen contact goes, we have had complaints and there were cases opened and closed um, since October of twenty sixteen. Um, we've reviewed, uh, the complaint photos, we've discussed them with the citizen in question. Staff was assured it was just a hobby and only a couple of used ramps were sold. That, so the gentleman makes the ramps for himself, tries them out for a couple of weeks when he's bored of them, then he puts them on Craigslist. But as a reminder, his ad states that they are new and not used. So the current code enforcement case we have was opened, uh, this past December. Uh, again, we were told this is only a hobby. So we monitored Craigslist for three to four months and the ad was repeatedly placed on Craigslist. A citation was drafted by our Neighborhood Improvement Special, uh, Officer. A follow-up, when we didn't hear back from him, um, a follow-up letter was sent and a meeting was arranged with the citizen and his wife. We shared the complaints, we shared the photos, but got no commitment to stop the activity. Um, and we also voided, uh, the citation due to a clerical error. The citation was more of, um, a misdemeanor, um, with a high fine attached to it. And after reviewing the code, it was determined that, um, a compliance order was the, the better vehicle to take, um, take this forward. So what does the compliance order show? It provides a date and location of the violation. It provides the code that has been violated and then we could go on further to describe that violation. It asks for the action that's required to correct it, the time period to accomplish it, and a copy or an explanation of the process to the citizen. So the specifics would be, um, the date would be twelve seven of seventeen. The location is the citizen's residence, which I have not used the address in this presentation. The code concerns home occupations and prohibited uses. The action is to stop constructing those ramps and selling them from home. The timeframe would be immediately and the copy of the process was provided to the citizen and his wife. So once a compliance, um, excuse me, order is, um, moved forward, uh, the next steps are, if the citizen complies, then there's no further action, the case is closed. But if we don't have any compliance, um, the next step would be an Appeals Board Hearing. So there would be a presentation of evidence by staff. And what we felt was really important is the citizen has the ability to object, to come and share his side of the story, why he believes this is only a hobby, why he believes he should be able to continue doing his action. If he does not appear, that constitutes a failure to exhaust all administrative remedies. Findings are made by the Appeals Board. A schedule of corrections, penalties, and the admin costs that could be assigned to him, um, would, you know, become public. And, um, there would be written notice by, um, the citizen of compliance if he goes forward with, if he decides to comply. A letter of compliance will stop actions by the city. This is not a project according to SEQA. And staff recommendation is that we are directed to issue a written compliance order for evidence of conducting a prohibited home business in an effort to stop and, um, aid the neighbors and their complaints. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Are there any questions? In there, um, um, in the evidence that was presented, there were also additional dirt bike or, or dirt tracks that were, um, constructed on Hetch Hetchy property and others?
Yes, um, the gentleman, um, was constructing them at Hetch Hetchy and the neighbors complained and, um, uh, Hetch Hetchy came out, uh, with dirt moving equipment and leveled it all out. Um, also, um, I think by an MID canal, he also tried to put in similar ramps and once MID was contacted, they came out and also leveled those dirt ramps.
Are there costs associated with, uh, clearing those?
Uh, not to the city, I don't know if, uh, the citizen himself was charged or not.
Looks like there were several occasions that happened, more than once, twice, as I read.
Uh, the report is quite clear. Is there any public comment on this? Come on up, you have to speak. Oh, come on up, state your name and then tell us.
I'm Ken Hoyt and I'm, uh, the gentleman who, uh, had been making these ramps over the last thirty years.
Okay.
Just making them as a hobby, enjoyed making skateboard ramps and sold them here and there. Um, uh, sometimes I wouldn't sell them for many months, but, uh, the, the, the dirt ramps were just made out of dirt and the kids in the neighborhood were building these and we, you know, we like to get out and have, have fun and we don't like to be indoors playing video games. I like to get all my kids out and building things and, uh, uh, having fun. And, and, and we, we asked the, uh, the, the people of Hetch Hetchy if it was okay to build the ramps and they said, go right ahead in a certain spot and we built them only in that certain spot. And the MID ones, we also did those and we asked the, the guys that were working right next to us if it's okay to build, uh, a jump and they said, go right ahead. And we did it, we did it and this was probably five years ago when we did it.
All right. How many have you sold?
Ramps?
Yes, let's say last year.
Last year, I'd say probably five to, between five and eight. Sometimes they're used, sometimes, because we experiment with different skateboard ramps, different heights, different, uh, angles. We try them out for a little bit and decide we don't want to use that ramp any, any longer and we will sell it. And basically, the, the ramps that we sell basically just support the hobby that we do. It's just, I have a normal job as a social worker and I just do this as fun with my children. I do it with the kids that I, uh, that I work with. I am, I, I also take them out skateboarding, I, I teach them how to, how to skateboard. I've taught a lot of ki- taught a lot of kids in this area, the basics of skateboarding, so.
Has, has your neighbor approached you and asked you their?
He has never come to me and asked me to stop skateboarding or building skateboard. He's never approached me, ever. And when I first moved into the home, uh, things were, things were fine and, uh, they played their music a little loud. They had a, a teenage son that we, we loved very much. And he's gone now and things just have changed and, uh, and, and we had a conversation back in that, in that time, that, you know, we understand we're close together here and we respect each other's, uh, space and, 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 and we, we know, we understand we're gonna live a little bit and they're gonna play their music and I'm gonna be doing some work here and there. But at ni- at nine o'clock, we shut it down and we respected that for many years. I, I, I've, I've had this ramp in my backyard for the entire time I, that I've, the nine years that I've lived there. And now it's become an issue for him. And, and I've actually, we actually use it less now. We used to use it quite a bit more.
Some of the pictures are, you know, not disturbed, but it, you're up on top of the ramp and you're looking at your phone and having conversations, you know, um, that would be.
We, we've lowered the ramp.
Oh, just like, based on what they've sent to us?
Yeah.
Okay, um, and with the amount of, of, um, Craigslist listings. And with the amount of Craigslist listings, seems like it's more than five that you've sold or have sold.
Those are over many years and some of those ramps.
Okay.
They're just pictures.
To me, just for me, you have to be able to convince me that this is not a business. Right now, I think it's a business.
Okay.
You don't have a business license. And there are also some regulations on, on construction of items such as this in your home. And there's also something, it's not out of the norm to be neighborly to your neighbor. You know, the noise of hammering, I don't know how incessant it is, it appears from the complaint that it is, that we have to, you know, it's come to us, it should not come to us. But now that it's here.
I have my neighbor that lives on the other side of me here with me to share his opinion.
I have a question. So who tore down the dirt ramps? Did MID and Hetch Hetchy tore them down or you did?
The neighbor complained about it, they went out and knocked them down. They run a tractor out there, they just ran a tractor out there the other day. They constantly are cutting down the leaves or the weeds.
All right, well, any other questions or comments? Does there anyone from the public have a comment, question? Then I'll bring it here. So you want to issue a citation?
A compliance order.
A compliance order, a compliance order. And the compliance order would make it what?
The compliance order would require him to stop what he's doing and basically provide us with the statement that said he has done running a business out of his home, then the case is closed and everything goes away. If he continues to do these activities as reported by, you know, his neighbors, then we can move forward and the Board of Appeals can decide whether or not to fine or require administrative costs or provide a schedule, if not immediately, when to quit. But it all hinges on whether or not he's decided to comply.
Can he construct these on, like, I believe there was one that said between twelve and five or skateboard between twelve and five where the noise won't be excessive when they are in their backyard in the evening?
Well, when the neighborhood improvement officer and I had the meeting with his wife and himself, we said, we understood, understand that you feel that this is your hobby. If you are using one of your skate ramps and you decide you wanted something different, you know, give us a call, give your neighbor a call, let us know what's going on. Hey, I'm just going to be constructing it this weekend, it's something I want to use in my backyard. And, you know, if people have a heads up and respectful about it, you know, it is a hobby.
Is that acceptable to you?
I have taken all the.
Okay, and I wish you would reach out to your neighbor and say, you know, this is truly a hobby, but I will comply.
I'm really afraid to have a conversation with him.
I'll tell you what.
He's threatened, he has threatened to fight me. He yelled at my son when he was playing in the street. I'd rather not have any conversations with him, he's not a person.
He says he's a reasonable person in his letters, so. Okay, just be respectful.
When we have neighborhood gatherings, they're the only ones that don't come. Not at my house, when we have it at other.
I, you know, that's beyond the scope of what we're doing today. Any recommendations other than have him comply to what?
I don't know, I would just kind of like to see you guys get together and be neighborly towards each other. And I don't know how that's going to happen. I don't know if there needs to be a mediator, like someone that both of you are friends with, another neighbor or something, and try to get you two to sit down and talk and just move forward and, you know, be, like I said, neighborly towards each other.
It'd be nice, yes.
Okay, all right. So you want us to?
We have to.
We have to vote on this, right?
What I would like is direction. But, you know, hearing from him tonight, if he is willing to come in and sign a letter stating that he will not conduct a home business, that he will only do it occasionally as, as a hobby and contact the city when he does, you know, we could close this case.
What is considered occasionally? You know, I occasionally, my wife had a business and she occasionally worked, not very often. No, no. What is occasionally?
It is open to interpretation.
Okay.
I would, I would suggest that.
And if you, if he says, "I'm going to build another ramp," he says, "Wait a minute, this is the third one in three weeks. Let's take a break," or something like that, you know, would, could you make that decision? Because for me, occasionally is once a quarter. But to my wife, it was once a year. Others would say once a week.
Well, he reported that as his hobby, he felt that he did between five and eight a year. If we were at the five level, four level, five, and within reasonable hours, I think that would be considered a hobby.
Okay, is it reportable to the IRS?
Once you make more than four hundred dollars.
Total.
Per year, once you make more than four hundred dollars per year, it's a business.
Yeah, a year?
Yes.
Because I profit?
That doesn't mean profit. Just four hundred, you make four hundred dollars a year. My wife could do that and not make a profit.
Well, yeah, I guess.
Okay, so make sure you're careful on that end, too.
Yes.
Okay, all right, I think we have compliance for this. Is there any action?
But if, but if they're used now, if I, if they've been used, that's, that's.
Have you?
It's like selling, it's just selling it on Craigslist. People sell it on Craigslist all the time.
If you're selling it, let's say you do a consignment shop. It's the income.
Okay, but I'm trying to get back the materials cost.
Or your tax consultant, if you don't have one, one can be directed.
That may be a conflict of interest.
The focus of the complaint was the disturbance, not the profit.
No, I know that. I just asked if, if it's a hobby, did he, is it reportable? It is reportable, so it's no longer a hobby. Okay?
So mayor, maybe what we do is, as part of this, issuing the compliance order and knowing that he would be willing to come in and sign that, that he will comply and then that will close the case and that won't move it any further than that. That way, we do have the option, if he does not come in and comply, to be able to move forward with any administrative or penalties or fines.
Okay, so reading item six point one, we are considering to authorize the issuance of a compliance order for the conduct of a prohibitive home business. That's what we're.
So once we issue the compliance order, he can follow all the things that she talked about. He can either cease and desist what he's doing, he can continue and go to the arbitration, that list that she did.
Correct.
All right, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and consider and authorize the compliance order for this conduct.
No, we, I think we have to, we authorize the issuance, not to consider it.
Did I say consider?
Yes.
Okay.
So take consider off.
I make a motion that we authorize the issuance of a compliance order to prohibit this home business.
I second.
We have a motion to issue a compliance order for the conduct of a prohibitive home business and a second.
Council members Fosse, Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Item six point two, rescind, restate, and clarify ad hoc illegal fireworks committee.
Mayor and city council members, at the March twenty seventh council meeting, we discussed the formation of an ad hoc committee in order to discuss illegal fireworks and how to be able to handle those in the future. Although we know the intent was for it to be informal, given the makeup of the committee that was discussed at that time, we determined after the fact that it would be subject to Brown Act, which would require the issuance of agendas and posting of meeting times, availability of it to the public, and issuing minutes in order to keep record of that. That would require a lot of staff involvement and we know that that wasn't what the city council really intended. And so what we would like to do is be able to clarify that two council members that were selected, council member Fosse and council member Campbell, would continue to serve as the committee and then they could solicit public input on their own.
That's it?
That's all.
Let me clarify, by taking this action, what that means is the, you took formal action by voting on it the last time. So when you take this action, we're rescinding that vote. It removes the formal voting and it officially makes it an ad hoc meeting.
Okay. All right, do we have a recommendation? Oh, wait a minute, anyone from the public wishing to discuss the ad hoc committee formation of illegal fireworks? See you none, bring it to the council to either keep it remaining or rescind?
I make a motion that we rescind, restate, and clarify the ad hoc illegal firework committee.
I second.
We have a motion to rescind by real call vote the voting action on March twenty seventh and form an ad hoc committee for illegal fireworks.
Council members Fosse.
Yes.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, resolution approving the guideline amendments for the first time home buyer program, housing rehabilitation program, single family temporary relocation plan, and a loan servicing policy and procedures.
So mayor and council members, tonight, the action we have for you is a review of the guidelines that are being proposed for our first time home buyer program, our housing rehab program. And to go along with that, our single family relocation plan and loan servicing policies and procedures. Every couple of years, CDBG and HCD and HUD issue new guidelines that were required to incorporate into our own guidelines here. So some of the recommended changes are just updates to specific wording that they use within their guidelines to make sure that they coincide. We just want to highlight that the purpose of the guidelines is to provide detailed information to potential applicants, to real estate agents that assist them, and lenders regarding our requirements. It makes sure that we're consistent when reviewing applications and that there's transparency in the process. So for our first time home buyers program, it's designed to be gap financing. So a resident would go out, would seek a primary loan and we would be the second loan on the home, allowing them to purchase the home for the value. We have our program that's currently funded by CDBG and Home. And so these funding sources require that our program guidelines be updated every couple of years. So the proposed amendments to our first time home buyer program just updates the language, as I mentioned before. The city does not provide funding for payment of discount points. So if somebody would like a discount on their interest rate, they would have to pay that out of their own funds. They could not use the city's loan to do that. Co-signers' income and assets would be taken into consideration when determining income eligibility. But the most important change that we're making to the guidelines is something that the city has control over. And that's that our maximum program assistance for our residents would go from seventy thousand dollars at the moment to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. What that potentially means is that somebody would be able to purchase a home for at least two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and allowed to be participants in the program. Currently, we're only able to loan up to fifty percent of the value of the home, which means that the value of the home would be capped at a hundred and forty thousand dollars. The market at this point in time does not, does not give us a lot of flexibility in terms of that. And so we feel that being able to raise that price would allow a lot of our residents to be able to take advantage of that. In addition, it would help us move our funds a lot more quickly, which would allow us to tap into grant funds if they're awarded to us. And then we also just want to document that the loan term is a thirty year term and that interest begins to accrue upon signing of the city loan and there's no prepayment penalties for any of the mortgage payments made. Our housing rehabilitation loan program gives assistance to eligible homeowners to address health and safety items. It's available to owner occupants and owner investors. And the program provides assistance with either below market rate loans or deferred payment loans. The amendments that we're proposing here are that a landlord who would choose to participate in the program has to commit to a rental limitation agreement for the life of the loan. Our maximum program assistance would go from a hundred thousand dollars to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which would be able to provide additional funding for, in order to account for cost of construction costs that go up. Clarification on who can receive deferred payment loans, which means that we would not begin collecting on that loan for a term of at least fifteen years. And whether we would, they would be eligible for grants to remediate any lead-based paint. And once again, clarifying prepayments and property owner responsibilities. We also want to clarify that if a project was deemed to be qualified for a reconstruction, then we would have the ability to loan up to two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in order to do that. Some of the other guideline updates are temporary relocation plan. This is the plan that we use should a housing rehab project be approved and that resident is not able to stay in their home during the life of the project. We would need to relocate them to an apartment or another home here in the city and the guidelines that we would have towards payment of that. Loan servicing policies and procedures is just to document the annual occupancy requirements that we have on our current loan holders and documents the formal foreclosure process, whether it's initiated by the city or some senior lien holder. And so tonight, we're recommending that you hold a public hearing and adopt the amended guidelines for our first time home buyer and housing rehabilitation program. And these guidelines are still subject to state approval. So there is the, the state does have the ability to make changes to them, which we would then bring back to council for, for adoption. Available for any questions.
You want me to hold a public hearing?
Yes, please.
So this should have been in section five, public hearings. But I can do that, I'm flexible.
Thank you.
All right, before I open it for public comments, are there any clarifications by the council? This is a public hearing, I open it for public comments?
Good evening, my name's Deanna Garcia. And good evening, mayor and city council members and city staff. I got here just in time for this item. I just wanted to commend the city on this awesome program and what great value this brings to the residents here in Riverbank. And I just really, I was quite amazed when I read the agenda and I had to read it twice to make sure I was understanding it correctly. And I just wanted to say how proud I was of the city of Riverbank for bringing something forth like this to the residents.
Thank you. Any further public? Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, I close public comment, public hearing. Bring it back to the council.
I make a motion we approve item six point three.
Second the motion?
We have a motion to approve six point three for the first, uh, reading, or, uh, first hearing and a second.
Council members Fossey.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item seven, staff reports on item st, uh, seven point one.
Uh, so Michael will be providing us with an update today on the water meter installation project for us all.
Evening, Mayor, council members. Uh, so I had a discussion with, uh, the contractor this morning. We have approximately four hundred boxes left to install. Uh, they have already started the audit walk. So basically, what will occur is the contractor and one of our staff will go to every water meter and, uh, make sure that it is, has the correct number, the correct er, in other words, the radio is the right one there, and so everything will be working properly when we get ready to go ahead and do the auto reads. They, it's just, at this point, uh, the contractor and discussion with my staff is saying that we should be out of this at the end of May.
Okay.
So once the audit is complete, that begins finances work. That means that we would be required to go through and make sure that the information that they've collected out in the field matches the information that we have in our system. Um, would probably take some time in order to do that, because we are reviewing about seven thousand accounts. Um, any, once we're comfortable with the fact that the information is correct, we would want to test internally, um, whether the readings are being captured correctly. Um, and then once that's done, then we can move forward with consumption billing. So although we had set a, um, timeline for ourselves to look at May for our first consumption billing, um, once we have the information, which probably won't be until the end of May, um, then we would probably be looking at at least one or two billing cycles after that, before we begin consumption billing.
Oh, September or November?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And there's one other item too, and I know I had talked to Maricel a little bit more about it this morning and to you this evening. Um, the grants that we are applying for will require Maricel's signature tomorrow, uh, for that, because the, uh, city manager is not here. Uh, we should have those grants in play by middle of next week to the state. And that was for the, uh, water reclamation issues that we were talking, discussing out of the wastewater treatment plan and a plan for the wastewater treatment plan.
Thank you.
And that's all for tonight.
Wait a minute, Donna has something.
Yeah.
I didn't have a chance to talk to you. I just, I just wanted to.
Blindside.
Just wanted to take a minute, uh, to thank you for the opportunity of the planning commissioners and myself to attend the League of Cities, uh, League of California Cities Conference in Monterey this past week. Uh, most of the planning commissioners were able to go, and when we met at the end to talk about their experiences, they were all really charged up and pumped up, and they really enjoyed the mock planning commission, uh, meeting that was held on the last day, and just, um, wanted me to share with you the, the thanks and, uh, for the opportunity. Um, they enjoyed it and, uh, hope to go again sometime. Thank you.
Thank you. Glad that they enjoyed it. Okay, item, uh, seven two, council authority members, uh, council member Fossey.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as many of you may have heard, the city of Modesto lost an employee yesterday. And I just wanna remind everyone how important it is to have the proper training and safety. Not that that was the case in this one, but we need to be, as employees of the city of Riverbank, Modesto, wherever, be cautious of what we're doing every day, be cautious to make sure that we're getting the training we need before we do the work. And, um, I just wanna let everybody know that they are in our hearts and in our prayers, um, the family and the city. Thank you.
Council member Campbell.
Just like to say that the first meeting of the ad hoc, uh, committee that was spoken about for fireworks will be on Thursday night at six o'clock at City Hall South in the conference room. We've, I've had several citizens approach me, and they'll be coming, and if you know anyone else that would like to attend the meeting, just let them know. Thank you.
Council member Cruz.
Just, uh, a quick announcement here. For those that don't know, April is Autism Awareness Month. Um, wear blue, uh, for those that are on the spectrum and support those kiddos and folks in our neighborhood. Um, I'm really proud to, uh, know, or announce that our Parks and Rec Department have a new swim and water safety program that they're piloting called Sharks and Mermaids Sensory Swim. Um, and I'm thrilled to, to see that happening in our town. Um, there will be a meeting, if you need more information on that, May thirty first at six P M here in City Hall.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Just want to, again, give a congratulations, uh, to the Riverbank High School for their, um, dedication that they had this afternoon, for their, uh, all-weather field and track. Uh, it's really nice if you get a chance to go and take a look at the track itself, and also the dedication plaque. It was very nice, good ceremony, and I represented the city council.
Very good. Okay, I'm gonna go out on a limb here, but I think everyone in this council truly appreciates the staff, the staff work, and what they do for the city. And I wanna commend Annabelle. Thank you. You keep the city safe, making sure that we dot the i's, cross the t's, and you have my full trust and confidence. Um, I know that we were talking about strategic planning. It's, sometimes it's necessary to, to stick to the date, but, uh, we're gonna change that. But there's a lot of things that need to be discussed immediately, or shortly thereafter, as soon as we, we can, in strategic planning. One is tax sharing agreements and the public facility fees. I'm already started talking with the county. The county's concerned that we have overgrown our, our tax revenue, and when this county has the most generous tax sharing agreement to the county, I have a, a different opinion. Um, and so we are starting our talks, and they are cordial, and they're professional, so we should have some agreements. But I, when we do strategic planning, I need some guidance on how far you're gonna let me go in the negotiations. We also need to have some time set aside to talk about the master developer, uh, prior to us going into the next meeting, and it would have been perfect if we, we hit that strategic planning. Uh, hopefully, we can hit the strategic planning in early June, just before we meet with them again. We also are moving forward with the Ganges reuse. Uh, some of you know about it, all of you should know about it, uh, as it goes forward. But that's another thing that we need to talk about, how are we going to structure? Uh, so strategic planning, to me, is essential, uh, but not necessarily having the same individuals. Um, Crossroads West final E I, uh, not, draft E I R is just about out. How far is just?
I'll know for sure on Friday, Mayor.
Okay. And then we have to, uh, after the, the final is approved, LAFCO preps. Um, and all of this has to be done, uh, before August. I mean, a lot of this has to be done before August, as well as the transfer of the R A, uh, the Riverbank Am, Army ammunition base. I met with the Stanislaus Housing Authority and Riverbank Housing Authority, and there is a great need for housing, and what, uh, you talked about was just the tip of the iceberg. Uh, the housing authority needs to start coming up with more units. We have a lot of homeless, um, homeless veterans that we can start construction here shortly on some homes if we, uh, work diligently on it. And we also have a lot of families. The schools know about them. They live with neighbors, friends, families. They rotate, the kids rotate, either weekly or monthly, or, you know, whatever the, the period of, of, uh, that house to be available for them. Uh, and those are classified as homeless, but we don't consider them homeless. Churches and schools have, have, uh, mentioned many families, and I don't know the term for many, but we need to quantify that and start developing some housing through the housing authority to get them into, uh, housing of their own. And whether it is, um, you know, for temporary housing, for mobile homes, or something that we could purchase and get in through the housing authority. So we need to talk about that also as we move forward, and the sooner the better. To give you an example, Google is gonna have forty thousand new jobs available in the next six weeks. Facebook has gone through a tremendous transition and has thirty thousand jobs imme, uh, immediately available. They don't have the transportation get to their campuses, but, you know, that's our problem. They don't have the housing to take care of all of those influx coming on in. With over fifteen thousand homes destroyed, California is in a severe housing shortage. That's why you saw some of the bills last year. That's why some of the bills this year on housing are so critical. And the Bay Area is looking for the inland to take care of their needs because, uh, they can't afford the homes in, in the Bay Area. So it's very crucial that we do not only our plan for housing for everyone, we also do the planned housing for the homeless and, uh, low-income housing. So that is something that we really have to start looking. For some reason, over the last five years, we lost touch with the Riverbank Housing Authority, and I've asked that we, uh, reassociate ourself as a city to get back in close association with, uh, Riverbank Housing Authority. So that is important. We got a lot to do, and I only have two years left. Oops, just a second. Okay, now we're moving to item eight, closed session items, consisting of item eight point one, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code section five four nine, five six point eight, property zero six two dash zero three one dash zero zero five, zero six two dash zero three one dash zero zero six, zero six two dash zero three one dash zero zero seven. Agency negotiator is the city manager, property negotiator is a medis. Item eight point two, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code five four nine, five seven point six. Agency representative, the city manager, city, uh, employees, organizations, miscellaneous employees, mid-management bargaining units. Before we go to, uh, closed session, oh, wait a minute, we got a third one. Uh, item eight three, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. Significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivision, Bravo of government code five four nine, five six point nine, two potential cases. Before we go into closed session, anyone from the public wishing to speak on any of the items that we have just addressed for closed session may do so. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we adjourn for closed session. The regular city council L R A board meetings for Tuesday, April tenth is now reconvened. Reporting out from closed session, item nine point one, report from closed session, item eight point one, conference with real property negotiators, direction has been provided to staff. Report from closed session on item eight point two, conference with labor negotiator, miscellaneous and mid-management bargaining units, direction has been provided to staff. Item nine point three, report from closed session, item eight point three, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, two potential cases, direction has been provided to staff. This meeting is now adjourned.